Do we?
Do we have Catherine online?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. And Catherine, just remember, sometimes I forget because I don't see you. So cut in if you, if I'm leaving you out.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started and we'll start with roll call with Suzanne.
Mayor LaBar.
Here.
Mayor Protim Case.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
President accounted for.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor. Mayor LaBar. I need to have Suzanne send me the link so I can sign into Civics Plus. The one that Kelly has given does not work.
Can you send Rusty a link to log in?
Yeah. I'm trying to think what link to send you. Let me.
R Neal, Rusty Neal, the R Neal at city.
No, I know your email address, but I don't know the link to send you.
I'm getting an error when Kelly shared the link to look to join and log in.
Okay.
I'm getting an error message.
I'm trying a different, I'm gonna send it through a different email.
You have this link anywhere. Kelly sent me.
Okay, here it comes again.
Okay. Is that, is that it?
Yes.
The researcher has been removed, had its name changed, was Temple.
Did you send it again?
I did.
That's the third time she's sent it. Caps.
Close out completely.
Yep.
Open a new window.
Well.
Maybe try Chrome. Okay, I just sent it to you.
That's what Catherine just sent is different.
Is different? Okay.
Definitely.
Okay, there you go, you're in. All right.
That's working.
Sorry.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
All right, we have no ceremonies, presentations, or appointments this evening, no item four. And we are on to consent calendar and council, are there any questions about consent calendar or can we take that as a whole this evening?
Excuse me, mayor.
Yes.
Can we go back to four?
Sure.
Um, I would like the city attorney to explain to us, I know we got an updated schedule or agenda. We had a date certain fourteen fifty-five to return to the agenda and on the updated one, I'm not seeing it.
It's on the back. Item D.
Oh, yes, okay, updated, updated. I got page one in my, oh, I didn't see that, thank you.
Sure.
When Suzanne sent the update, I had page one.
Gotcha, it's ninety.
Thank you.
Okay, so board number five. Are there any questions or can we take that consent calendar as a whole this evening?
Good.
No questions? Okay, can I get a motion then for five?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Robert has a second.
Okay, councilmember Neal, are you ready for us or do you need more time?
He's in.
I've talked on. And council, you may vote. Thank you, council, motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you. We are off to item six. And it's public comment on items not on the agenda and Suzanne will let us know if there are people signed up for that.
Chief is gonna. Okay, thank you. Just one second, I'm sorry, mayor. Let's check.
Like I'm sharing our meeting in somebody's device.
I have it as low as it'll go.
Okay, thank you. Yes, perfect.
Not that big.
Okay, so let's see, I have some people that have signed up online and they all want to speak to items on the agenda. In person, I have Ms. Betterman has signed up to speak on an item not on the agenda.
Great.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Deanne Betterman, I'm a citizen of Woodland Park. The theme of my three minutes is, do we currently have the right people on our city council to maintain the fabric of the neighborhoods that we love? And we don't want to see destroyed. We will have a special election on December twelfth to determine how Woodland Park will legally solve its short-term rental problems. The citizens have spoken through one thousand three hundred forty-five voters who will vote the Citizens Initiative on December twelfth of this year. Over the last ten months, the more disinformation from our city council, the more support the Citizens Initiative has received. For ten months, you have proven that you will not put the citizens first. You continue to put different investor ordinances on the table instead of supporting what the voters consistently tell you that they want you to do to solve our short-term rental problems. What they want you to do is in your oath of office to maintain the character of the fabric and the fabric of our neighborhoods. Your approach is to support investors and license the problems instead of not allowing investor-owned short-term rentals to operate in wrong zoning districts in the first place. The citizens that you are supposed to represent do not agree with you and any ordinance, short-term ordinance, rental ordinances to date that you have tried to force on us. The citizens have clearly told you that we want neighborhoods with neighbors. We want homes, not hotels in our neighborhoods. Hotels belong in our commercial district, not our next door to any one of us where they clearly do not belong. A few of the questions the citizens need to ask over the next couple of months before they vote. Why are you trying to force us to live in neighborhoods with hotels next door? Why did we vote you into council if you don't care about what over one thousand three hundred of your voters tell you we want you to do to solve the major short-term rental problems in our city? And for the future, should we allow you to keep those seats that we put you in if you don't support the citizens first? Our neighborhoods are not for sale to investors. We told you that over and over for ten months and you are not listening. Voting matters. Vote with the citizens on December twelfth. It's the right thing to do to preserve the character of our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Kitten Walker.
I'm sorry, I need a minute after. I'm stunned by what she said. Has my time started?
No.
Thank you.
It's gonna start right now.
Okay, so I would like to talk about our Victory Life Community Impact Team Forum on last Monday night. A huge success. It was so awesome, just so proud of the whole event. I'd like to publicly thank our two commissioners, Dan Williams and Eric Stone for attending along with thanking councilmember Zuluaga for opening in prayer and a history lesson on our educational system. I'd like to thank councilmember Frank Connors for attending. It really speaks highly to the commitment you have to our Woodland Park parents and students. Catherine Nakai, I thank you for replying to the email invitation that you couldn't come, but we really respect that you have the character enough to respond to the email. Chamber of Commerce President Deb Miller responded to her email invitation that she could not attend because she was at Caris Bible College on stage welcoming the, the visitors to Woodland Park and the ministers conference. So I thank President Deb Miller for her, her response. It speaks highly of her character. On the other hand, Hillary LaBarre, Kelly Case, Carol Harvey, and Rusty Neal did not reply to the email invitation. In the words of Bonhoeffer, "To not speak is to speak." You spoke loudly with your non-response. You spoke to your level of character and integrity. To not act is to act. You did not attend the forum. You spoke loudly with your lack of actions to the parents of the Woodland Park students. First Samuel twelve sixteen, "Stand and see the great things the Lord will do." Sorry, "Stand and see with your own eyes the great things the Lord will do." This coming Monday night is the Chamber of Commerce Forum at the U-Pass Cultural Center. I'm curious which council members will be there. It's going to be a good forum. It will be an opportunity to hear the questions that an out-of-state company created for the Woodland Park School District. I wonder how this out-of-state company knows what the parents of Woodland Park students want to know from these candidates. First Samuel twelve sixteen, "Stand and see with your eyes the great things the Lord will do." In Jesus's name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tim Northrup.
Good evening. My name's Tim Northrup. I'm Golden Court. I want to share with you some numbers, but first off, speaking of numbers, did you know that nineteen had a fight with twenty, twenty-one? I'm providing these numbers to you during the items not on agenda because the rest of the evening is really just going to be a formality as you continue down the same path as you've been going on for the last year. Over the summer, I spoke to hundreds of citizens about the character of our neighborhoods. Many of them were thanking us for the effort that we were doing. And even more wanted to sign the petition. My own calculation of the people that I spoke to, I figured three out of four people that opened their doors and talked to me, signed the petition. That's seventy-five percent. And we could have gotten even more signatures, but we ran out of time, even with three months, we ran out of time. Speaking of time, it only takes you the city council a few hours over a couple meetings to just really pass a bad ordinance, like fourteen thirty-one. That ordinance would have destroyed the character of our neighborhoods and even the character of our city. And it's appalling that you don't even have to explain the reason why you passed it instead of supporting your oath of office to maintain the characters of our neighborhoods. It took the citizens over twenty-five hundred well-spent hours to stop your efforts to sell our neighborhoods to the investors. And we will spend even more hours from now until the upcoming special election to make sure that the disinformation and fear-mongering that is going on is clarified or refuted. I would actually call it bearing false witness. And we will continue to share the truth. We believe after talking to around two thousand voters that they will not be confused. They will see the truth, even with your attempts to add whatever ordinance you want to put on the ballot from here on out. We are very fortunate to live in one of twenty-four states with laws that allow citizens to completely bypass the city government with the Citizens Initiative petition to do what's right for the city when the city government refuses to do so. In sixty-nine days from tonight, the citizens will win. The citizens will defeat your efforts to support investors instead of supporting the citizens despite your best efforts at disinformation campaigns with the last ten months to sell out our neighborhoods. The good news to Woodland Park is that the citizens now know how to stop bad legislation that our own city council wants to force on us and our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So mayor, everybody else has signed up to speak on agenda items.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have no seven. We have no number eight. We are on to number nine. And we are starting with nine A, approval of an emergency ordinance fourteen sixty-one. And our presenters, our city attorney.
Good evening, mayor and council. I sent you a memo explaining the various measures that are before you tonight. Under the law, once the clerk issues a final determination of petition sufficiency, you may adopt the ordinance proposed by petitioners exactly in the form petition proposed, and that's what's presented here. It's presented as an emergency ordinance because it has to be adopted tonight. Or in the alternative, you refer the measure to the ballot, and that's the resolution that follows this item on the agenda. This as an emergency requires a unanimous vote.
Council questions or comments? Or a motion?
Sure, make a motion to approve fourteen sixty-one ordinance of the city council for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, amending Title eighteen of the Woodland Park Municipal Code concerning zoning districts with short terminals are allowed to be licensed and operated within the city limits of Woodland Park, Colorado, and declaring an emergency.
I'll second.
Council, you may start your.
Discussion. I have a question.
We have discussion, excuse me, and public hearing, I'm sorry. Right. Sure.
I, I heard that what is in the packet is different from what the Citizens Initiative was, the language. There was a piece that was dropped off. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
No.
So I misunderstood.
No, I mean, that did happen.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably your former city.
Madam Mayor, I would like to respond to Councilman Neal's point. I think you may be considering the ballot initiative wording. That is not what nine A is addressing.
Correct.
Okay.
And if you could, Mr. Attorney, explain again, how many votes do we need to approve or disapprove the emergency ordinance?
As an emergency ordinance, ordinance fourteen sixty-one would require a unanimous vote.
So a vote of no would kill the emergency ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Attorney, what would the consequence of that be?
Let's see, let's know this upfront.
Okay, the first, the first consequence, of course, is that the emergency ordinance would fail. The second consequence would then, a nondiscretionary duty would fall upon you as council to refer the matter in the form proposed to the voters, set a ballot title, and schedule a special election. That is what the next resolution does.
And so a no vote allows us to refer this to the citizens for the ballot. Okay.
Then I have one question because I've heard that the petitioning group, if we all approved it and it was instantly approved, it would be challenged by the Citizens Initiative group to stop it from being approved through a, a referendum. Would that be possible?
Yes.
Certainly. As with any, as with any ordinance approved by council, other than, well, not with an emergency ordinance.
I was gonna say.
That's right.
With the.
Caught me.
Even with a.
No, you wouldn't be subject to referendum, but it would be subject to initiative, could be repealed by initiative. And an initiative is, can be started at any time.
Okay. Suzanne, I'm not getting the voting.
It's okay, we still have public comment, so.
Yeah.
But still. So two things, Rusty doesn't have the thing to vote and public comment. Do you have anyone signed up?
So this is where I need the audience's help. Because everybody signed up to speak on STR or S, you know, not everybody put the exact item. So I'm just going to ask those that are signed up, did anyone want to speak on the emergency ordinance? In your name, sir? Okay, I have you signed up. Come on up, please, thank you.
I'm Eric Lockman, a citizen of Woodland Park. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, today I stand before you representing a community of nearly eight thousand residents with diverse views and concerns regarding short-term rentals within our city. It is crucial that we carefully consider implications of hastily adding a new emergency ordinance to regulate these rentals and instead recognize that the significant contribution that short-term rentals make to our community by upholding the principles of autonomy, flexibility, community-driven solutions, personal property rights, and recognizing this district, this distinct advantage, we can create a balanced and thriving community for all residents and visitors alike. First and foremost, let us acknowledge that short-term rentals are more than just a source of income for many of our fellow residents. They are also a vital contributor to our city's financial well-being. Hosting guests through platforms like Airbnb not only allows property, properly, property owners to make a living, but also generates substantial tax revenue that funds important community services. When more guests stay here rather than Colorado Strip Springs, they spend their dollars here rather than Colorado Springs. By imposing stricter regulations or outright bans on short-term rentals, we risk not only jeopardizing the livelihood of local hosts, but also potentially reducing a significant source of revenue that benefits our entire community. That said, we understand the concerns expressed by some members of our community. They worry about guests who may come to our city to party or disturb the peace or inadvertently cause disturbances such as leaving food out for wildlife. Although this may not be the majority of short-term rentals, these concerns are valid and deserve our attention. Woodland Park is diverse. For this very reason, some may look for housing within an HOA community or outside an HOA community. Some may say, my property, my choice. The solutions to these concerns does not necessarily lie in imposing citywide ordinances, but rather in empowering individual community covenants. Each community within our city has unique needs and values. By allowing individual communities to set their own rules and regulations for short-term rentals while respecting personal property rights, we can address these issues within the context of each specific neighborhood. Community covenants crafted with the input of residents can affect, effectively balance the concerns of noise disturbance and wildlife with the benefits of short-term rentals and the crucial tax revenue they provide. In conclusion, as we consider the future of short-term rentals in our city, let us recognize the vital role they play in contributing to the needs of individual neighborhoods. I, I urge the city board to exercise caution in adding new ordinances that may inadvertently harm or harm our local economy and financial stability. Instead, let us embrace the power of individual community covenants, uphold personal property rights, and make decisions that preserve our economic opportunities while addressing the legitimate concerns of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Mayor LaBar, I have Mike Nakai has signed up for nine A as well.
Good evening, council. Mike Nakai, Woodland Park. I, I suspect that to your question about whether the petitioners were wanting you to pass fourteen sixty-one tonight, and why they would not is probably because they don't trust you to not just change it a month from now. Because if it is put on the ballot and voted in, you can't change it for two years if I'm not correct, right, Jeff? So that's my suspicion as far as why they wouldn't want you to pass it tonight. Many of you think that STR is a property rights issue. Some of you may even, some of you may think that we should be able to do whatever we want with our property and then our property rights stop at our property lines. I mean, our, our property rights in our property line. In this city, both of those are wrong. Woodland Park is a zoned community. I hold here in my hand the municipal code of the city of Woodland Park. In addition to zoning codes, there are sections on subdivisions, mobile homes, buildings, public peace, business regulations. These are the property rights of the residents of every resident of Woodland Park. There's a long list of businesses you cannot operate from your home in a residential zone. Lodging businesses are just one of them. How do I know STRs are lodging businesses? Because the city issues them a business license in order to collect a lodging tax. This book belongs to our residents and gives them the confidence that the city won't allow a nightclub or a motel to take over the lot next door. If you look at our zoning maps and the use table that's in Title eighteen, it becomes obvious that the fundamental purpose of zoning is to provide some separation between commercial and residential zones. Our maps show that, the use table shows it. Heavy-impact commercial zones are right on the business corridor. And our pure residential zones are as far away from it as possible. You can just see it on the map. STRs violate this principle and you know it. You took an oath to uphold the ordinances of the city of Woodland Park. Please, please remember that each time you climb those steps to sit in those chairs. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers signed up for this.
Okay. Rusty, is your screen working? To be able to vote then? Or Suzanne, do you want to resend it? Let me cancel. Yeah, I didn't get one either, Suzanne. Okay, I resent it. There we, there we go.
I have it now.
Okay.
Okay, council.
Sometimes.
I was gonna vote yes until I heard them stop.
I just need to.
I need, I have the old one on my screen and I thought, I don't know.
Thank you. I think in my career as a clerk, it's the first time I'm ever gonna say this. This has failed unanimously. So thank you. Yep.
Okay, we're off to item nine B.
Did we get a result?
I just said it, yes, it failed unanimously.
Oh, failed unanimously.
So nine B is approval of resolution nine oh seven. And again, well, actually with this one, our city clerk's the presenter.
Okay, thank you, council. Nine B is resolution nine oh seven, which would set the election, the Citizens Initiative and the ballot title for an election for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. So it's directing the clerk to put this to a vote of the people.
Council questions or comments?
Suzanne, did you want to make any other comments about that, saying you're the presenter?
I can, I can. Would you like me to read the ballot question that is proposed here?
That would be perfect.
Okay, so the question that is proposed to be. Okay, so the question that is proposed to be brought to the voters on December 12th, 2023, from the citizens initiative states, shall the Woodland Park Municipal Code be amended to define a short-term rental unit as a dwelling unit that is rented or utilized for furnishing lodging for any period of less than 30 consecutive days? And to define primary residence as the place where a person spends a majority of their time during the year, providing that short-term rental units that are the primary residence of the owner-operator are allowed in all single-family and commercial zoning districts, and short-term rental units that are not the primary residence of the owner-operator are only allowed in commercial zoning districts, and imposing requirements to which short-term rental units will be subject, including occupancy limits, parking requirements, and a requirement that the primary resident be living on-site during a short-term rental visitor stay. And that'll be a yes or a no question.
Counsel members, as I mentioned earlier, this, this resolution has three parts. First, it sets a ballot title. You may amend the ballot title. It sets an election, a special election day for December 12th, which is something we've already, you've already discussed. And finally, it directs the clerk to set the language before the voters as a ballot measure, the citizen initiative. This requires a majority.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments on that?
So this particular item does not specify the ballot wording.
It's, what I just read would be the ballot question. So once counsel approves the resolution, the, the question that I just read out loud, unless you amend it, would be the question on the ballot. That's the ballot title.
So I have, I have a question then, under the title, I would prefer that the language say amend pursuant to citizens initiative. As ours has stated, it's pursuant to city council. And then, because oftentimes people just read the questions, they don't necessarily read the meat of what they're voting for. And I also think that it should be amended to say, I know that says living on-site, but I think that the ballot question should say that they must stay throughout the visitor's stay. Like they, there's a, the wordings in their, in their ballot, in the ordinance says that they must be there, present throughout the visitor's stay. And I think that that should be in the question because that is a primary enforcement issue for the city.
I'm taking notes, you guys.
Sure, I'm just watching you write.
Yes, so you would like it to say that, so shall the Woodland Park Municipal Code, as per the citizens initiative, be amended?
Yeah.
Okay, and then down below, you would like it to say that the primary resident must be present during the visitor's entire stay.
Throughout the visitor's stay, which is what.
Throughout just visitor's stay.
The, the exact language in the ordinance.
So I have a question for the city attorney. My question for you is, the citizens have created their initiative. Does counsel have the authority to change the wording on this citizens initiative for what they want to see on the ballot? Or do this counsel have a say only in what counsel is proposing onto the ballot?
Counsel has only the authority to define the ballot title. They may not change the substance of the measure itself. What's before you right now is the language of the ballot title.
And counsel does have the authority to change that.
Correct.
Okay.
They can't change it to make it not mean what the ballot measure is.
Right. And the wording that I'm recommending comes directly from their.
From it, yeah, sure.
And that was my question, Mayor LaBarre's, your suggestion, which I'm assuming is going to become a motion to amend, is the wording that is exactly from the ordinance of the citizens initiative?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And so I'll, I rarely make a motion, but I would make a motion to amend 907.
Well, since you have the language.
Yeah, could we see the whole thing right now?
Can we?
Your change?
Either post it up here or some.
Paragraph seven in the citizens initiative under section.
Can you, can you pull it from your screen word? It's under the.
We'll go to the page in the packet. Can you do that?
I do not have the packet open, I operate in a different program, does anyone have the packet?
Page one.
Thank you. I'm in a different program, so it's. And then it's at the bottom page of 907, it's in all caps.
It's not my page, 36. Yeah, it's page 59, I think, and our, 58 in our packet. If you want to see the language, that'll give you the language in the citizens initiative. Yeah, it's.
If you just go to nine B on your agenda online and click on it, it will pull up your option to just pull their resolution up immediately.
And it's, it's number seven, under section 1878, 050.
Suzanne, the, basically it reads to operate a primary residence as a short-term rental, at least one of the primary residents must live on-site throughout the visitor's stay.
Right.
So it says that live on, doesn't say be present.
Right, and it should say live on-site throughout the visitor's stay.
Okay, what you said, what you were asking for was must be present during the stay.
Oh, I said that? I thought I read exactly right here.
Yeah, no, I have it here, you had asked for it must be present during the, throughout the visitor's stay, what would you?
I apologize, throughout the visitor's stay.
So must be, must live?
It says live on-site throughout the visitor's stay.
Yeah, it's just missing one word. Short-term, throughout, in front of visitor's stay.
Okay, so it's just one word, heading throughout.
Correct. Short-term rental, throughout visitor's stay. Right, I see that, but that's. Throughout, right there is what's.
So are we removing the word during?
I want to see the brief, the one that's proposed. It's right.
No, okay. So a requirement that the primary resident be living on-site.
No, but that's all the whereas is, I just want.
Because here the question is during, do you want me to? During, remove during. Keep their language.
Right there.
So then what are we amending?
Add the word throughout.
Or is it?
Okay, okay.
I thought it didn't say in there, in there.
Have it, Jeff, right there.
It's in the. Valid question. It's in number seven, to operate a primary residence as short-term rental, at least one of the primary residents must live on-site. Oh, it does say throughout the visitor's stay. That is, but is that, that's not what's in the.
Right, so do you want me to remove during and put throughout?
Yes.
That's what my question, yes. Okay, so then we have it as, if we're changing one word, it's a requirement that the primary resident be living on-site throughout a short-term rental visitor's stay.
Well, there were also, there's also the change in the first law.
Getting the initiative.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
During is saying through. Say throughout, which is what it says.
I was abbreviating it originally, and I didn't mean to, I was doing it from my memory.
So I have, we're going to add the citizens initiative, we're going to remove the word during and supplement it with throughout. That would be the amendment.
Yes, because I accidentally said during, because I was doing it from memory.
So I have a motion.
I'll second.
Then we can have, we have people signed up to speak and counsel discussion.
Right, but that's just to amend that title. Yeah, okay.
So it's not a motion yet for the actual.
Right, it's not a motion to.
Okay, so right now, we're just gonna, we're gonna vote on the amending of it.
Correct.
Kind of.
Not, not the approval of it.
Right, kind of.
Do you want to vote right now? I didn't know if counsel wanted to discuss anything. I'm just waiting for you to tell me what to do.
Well, I guess.
We can vote on the amendment.
Okay.
First, and then.
Is there public?
There will be public comment.
But not on the amendment? Oh, on the whole thing?
Right, right.
Got it, yeah.
Okay, so I have a first from LaBarre, a second from Case, I'm going to do a voice vote for this one, LaBarre?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously, and we will make the correct amendments to the ballot title.
Thank you. Now we have the resolution as a whole, if there are questions or comments for the whole, or I can go ahead and move to public comment. Looks like we're ready for public comments, Suzanne.
Okay, so for public comment, the first speaker is Arnie Sparnes.
All right, honorable mayor, city council members, my name is Arnie Sparnes, I live in the sunny Glen neighborhood. Today is a day of celebration because the community will be finally guaranteed that their inputs on short-term rentals will be heard. When December 12th rolls around, we'll, we'll all have clarity on what to expect with the quality of life in our Woodland Park neighborhoods. Now we wait until we receive our ballot in the mail, submit it, and rest comfortably knowing that we've had our say. Just to reflect back, we all need to remember that short-term rentals are not currently a permitted use in our zoning table of permitted uses for business and residential districts. Some may consider it ambiguous, ambiguous, but clearly is not listed as a permitted use. The city started to take action last year to resolve the ambiguity. Now the citizens initiative, short-term rental ordinance, will clearly define the use for short-term rentals in our zoning table of permitted uses for the first time in the appropriate zoning districts. This makes the city zoning laws consistently predictable going forward. Short-term rental units will be the primary res, will be in primary residences only in residential districts, and not, and non-primary resident or absentee owner, short-term rentals can flourish in commercial districts. This consistency is good for the city's residents, and it's good for businesses wanting to invest in our city. It was a long road to get to this point. I want to thank Woodland Park Vote residents for standing up for their neighborhoods, first with expressing their views in the community engagement process, then with the successful referendum petition to repeal the Wild West STR, STR ordinance that the city council passed last November, and now with the clarity of 1,345 verified signatures to ensure that they have their say at the ballot box. We all look forward to seeing our ballot arrive in the mail, thank you for moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now mayor, the, some of these speakers just have STR ordinance, I just have to ask, Andrew Smith? Did you want to speak to this, sir? Okay. Jamie Trappis? She just has STR discussion, okay, then moving to the, I have Jerry Penland next.
Okay. Suzanne, Rusty said Jamie's hand is up.
We'll get her right after Jerry, thank you.
My name is Jerry Penland, Woodland Park citizen and voter. We're handing out the Woodland Park organization chart to each of you as a reminder of who is actually in charge of our city. The top box in an organization chart defines who's in charge. Who is in the top box of the Woodland Park organization chart? The mayor and city council? Absolutely not. They are in the box below. The citizens of Woodland Park are in the top box of our city. We have the same short-term rental problems that are being solved similar to other solutions by cities all over the nation. We're behind others solving this major problem since the majority of our city council has actively worked for 10 months against a large group of citizens instead of listening to them. For the short-term rental problem, a couple of years ago, we were only a few in the top box. Then we were 837, and you called us a small, loud group. Since our city council continued to actively work against what we wanted to do, we engaged to solve this major problem without you. We listened over a thousand voters and put together the citizens common sense, short-term rental ordinance, not a citywide ban that a lot of folks wanted us to do. Move forward to last month, we are now 1,345 Woodland Park voters with a common theme, to protect our zoning laws. You can't honor your oath of office to maintain the character of our neighborhoods while ignoring our zoning laws. The more you actively work to misinform and belittle the citizens, the more support we get from the voters. We keep hearing about an other group that we, you've been talking to and taking direction from, that does not agree with the citizens initiative. Since you know every one of the 1,345 of us, names and addresses, it's a public record, it would be nice if you brought this special interest group out in the open and let everybody know who belongs to this other group. Or probably, in my opinion, less than 200 people. A lot of them are not even Woodland Park voters. 1,345, you don't support versus 200 that you do support. All will be answered on December 12th, when the citizens' voice is heard. If you want to challenge the 200 number, bring the number, the names and addresses, like we have our 1,345. Another great soundbite for us was just a few minutes ago. Living on-site. I lived on-site in my house today, but I wasn't there all the time. I wasn't in Texas or Arizona or Florida, I lived on-site today in my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Jamie, you may speak, Jamie Trappis?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, yeah, my name is Jamie Trappis, and I'm just trying to better understand the petition process in Woodland Park. Based on what I've seen here the past several months, essentially, I could pass around a petition to ban all dogs from the city. Some dogs I find annoying and they bark. I personally have a negative experience with a dog, I'm afraid for my children to be around dogs. So I'm going to pass around a petition to ban all dogs despite not all dogs being bad. If I get enough signatures, does that mean it automatically moves to a citywide vote, even though it's not legally enforceable to do that? The citizens petition says a homeowner has to be home if someone is renting or utilizing a portion of their home, keyword they're utilizing. So what if an owner needs to run an errand and has a renter in their house? Or what if a babysitter's coming over or a pet sitter is utilizing the home while the owner is out of town? Is that considered illegal under this petition? Based on the wording, I would say yes. So why would we spend thousands of taxpayers' dollars, dollars on a special election that could later be thrown out in the court? And also, to. And also tonight, I've heard a lot of people talk about the character of the neighborhood and saying how STRs don't maintain the character of the neighborhood. And that is just spreading misinformation. I would welcome anyone to come and look at our STR. In order to get bookings, charge a premium price and get good reviews, our home has to look charming, beautiful, well-maintained. My question is, now what about home daycares, dog kennels, long-term rentals? What about residents who don't choose to maintain their own property? As a STR owner, I can name several non-STR homes near us who do not add to the character of the town that everyone keeps talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, council. We get a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution nine oh seven, series two thousand twenty-three. A resolution of the city council of Woodland Park calling a special election for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three and directing the citizens initiative to be placed on the ballot at said election.
Second.
As amended, but we already passed the amendment. As amended.
And I'll second.
Catherine seconded.
Okay, council, you may vote electronically.
The three of us haven't got.
I just.
Yeah, I didn't.
I didn't get it, but I'll, I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't get it either. I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Motion is passed unanimously. Okay.
All right, we are off to nine C. That's approval of resolution nine oh eight, series twenty-three, and the presenter is once again.
Excuse me, someone had signed up for, there's so many of the ones to speak on the matter that has nothing to do with STRs. I got a text from the audience and they didn't get a chance to speak.
Okay.
Could they speak before we continue?
Can we hang on a second?
Thank you. It's just. Thank you.
We're moving along, babe.
Surprise.
Thank you Suzanne.
My name's Jean Baldwin. I'm the president of the Rampart Library Foundation. And we have an event on Saturday and we have had the posting for the liquor light, special event liquor license. And I thought it was supposed to be voted on and hopefully approved tonight, but I didn't see it on the agenda. So that's why I'm here.
Oh, so the posting is only, so the city clerk's office has the authority from council to approve special events. The poster and public notices for protest only.
Okay.
So only, so they come to the council immediately if they want to protest the event. You don't want to do that.
I don't want to protest. I want to hope invite everybody to come. Make sure that you do come.
Right, so give, give the date and time and location.
Your event is at the Woodland Park Public Library. I hope you all know where that is. And it's this Saturday, five to seven thirty PM. It's a roaring twenties fundraising event. And we hope to see you there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Can you tell us, ma'am, can you tell us where somebody would like to sign up for that or is it you pay at the door?
So either way, I did leave an invitation at your, at your desk. So you can go online and pay, buy tickets online through Eventbrite. You can pay at the door. You can go to the library and buy tickets either with your credit card or by cash check.
And it's forty-five ahead of time.
Forty-five dollars ahead of time. At the door, it's fifty dollars. So you'll save five bucks if you do it now. As we'll have food, you know, food, drinks, live music, Charleston demonstrations, et cetera. And it's to raise money for Makerspace.
You all should have one of these.
Yeah.
Jean, are you teaching the Charleston?
I am not teaching the Charleston.
I'm sure you would.
That would be bad. And you don't have to dress up even though it's really fun when you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck tonight, everybody.
Okay, nine C. Jeff?
Okay, mayor and council. Nine C is resolution nine oh eight, series twenty-three, placing ordinance fourteen sixty-two on the ballot. Ordinance fourteen sixty-two is the text of ordinance fourteen fifty-five, which you're all familiar with. This is the ordinance that we laid over until tonight, a few months ago. You may amend this proposal in any manner that you see fit. And upon approval of this resolution, the matter, you will instruct the clerk to place the matter before the voters, if, if a majority of you so well.
And just so the citizens understand, the ordinance number did change from fourteen fifty-five to fourteen sixty-two.
That's correct because fourteen fifty-five still technically exists and we'll talk about that later.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
So I have a question. Jeff?
Sure, and Suzanne is just handing us the amended question for the ballot that was amended earlier.
Oh, okay.
And are you able to see that on your screen, Catherine?
Uh, yes.
Eric, you have the original question in the packet. Could you show the amended one? There's a second part to that. Yeah, it is. I just saw it. There it is, right there. Can you get that to show the full?
Perfect. So Catherine, our attorney, our city attorney is just gonna briefly describe what's going on here with the title change. Okay.
The council, the, the statutes direct that, as I mentioned earlier, that you set a ballot title for these measures. We took a whack at the ballot title and then we received some suggestions from the public, including from the proponents of the initiative that frankly were good suggestions. And provide a little more information to the voters about what the proposal includes. And so that is basically what you have before you. Our only, only change at the staff level from what was suggested is to make it clear that this is a measure referred by the council to distinguish it from the other ballot question voters will confront, which is initiated.
So council, are there any questions about that?
Okay, so yeah, I don't have a, I don't have a question on the title. I just have a question on the actual, how do we, how are we doing this with an ordinance without actually going to public first and second readings? I'm just, I'm confused as to how we can just pick an ordinance and put it on a, on a ballot without having public hearings is, I just, I didn't see anything in the charter that says we can do this is my question, basically.
The authority is in the state statutes. I mentioned this in my memo to the council.
Oh, I missed that, sorry.
Constitution, the constitution provides that state statutes of general applicability continue to apply to home role cities unless and until they're superseded on a matter of local concern. This statute, which grants authority to the council or refer any matter to the voters, is not superseded by any aspect of our charter.
Okay, great, thanks.
To apply.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
Well, can we start the discussion of perhaps making some changes to
Sure.
the language that's in fourteen sixty-two?
Yeah. Yeah.
If you're agreeable to the change, the proposed changes to the ballot title, which are pretty mechanical. Yeah, it'd be great if we could get that out of the way before we start marking up the actual substitute proposal.
Yeah, so if I can get a motion for that, then.
Well, my own, my only question that if he's wanting to change language that has substance, is any of that going to change in what's in this language here? Should that be?
Well, we'll take a look at the end to see what's approved, to see if it necessitates a change in the title.
Do you foresee any of that, Rusty?
There could be some stuff added in here based on our conversation.
The, the jurisprudence on ballot titles requires that it be of the fair and accurate presentation of the content of the ballot proposal. But it is not fatal that, that a ballot title not include every aspect of the proposal. Because the balance between brevity and thoroughness.
I'd just like to thank the citizens for engaging and helping make this as good as it can be. That's all. Thank you.
So Jeff, are you looking for a motion to approve the ballot title separate than?
Yes.
The resolution.
Yes, we would amend the ballot title in the same way that we are about to consider amendments to the, the measure proposed.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to amend the ballot title for resolution nine oh eight as presented by the city attorney.
I'll second that.
Okay, council, I will do a voice vote for this one. Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Connors?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
LaBarre?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six one.
Okay, now off to the substance then.
I'd like to ask one question to our attorney. How does this not circumvent the local covenances and HOAs of our current neighborhoods?
You mean as proposed?
Yes.
I think it does. I think it's, it supersedes them unless, unless the covenants are preserved in the ordinance.
Thank you.
And if the covenants are more restricted?
Then I think the covenant, whichever is more restricted would prevail.
Thank you.
I've got to go slow because I've got a list of the things that I, I'd like to propose.
Okay.
But some of the language has already been incorporated. And let me begin. I've had a lot of dialogue with Arnie, some of it a little bit testy, sometimes a little not. But I can assure you, Arnie, I have gone out of my way to listen to you. I've had a conversation with another person on private messaging and a lot of what you have said to me, I've had to go back and check and I have on those sites where I had spoken incorrectly, I've gone back and changed. I'm going to make one change publicly tonight because I was wrong in another area. The one where I, I said that it is not possible to put any STRs in commercial zones. There is a row, it's kind of worded a little funny where you can put single family and duplexes in three of the commercial zones. So, Arnie, thank you for challenging me. I went back and looked over and over again and you are correct. I was wrong publicly. Okay? I have listened to you and have spoken to individual council members trying to get four people to agree on some changes that bring fourteen fifty-five, now numbered fourteen sixty-two, a whole lot closer to what your ordinance is intending to do. Ideally, in the SR and UR, it would go to zero if that's what the data over some time shows we could absorb. Because that's what citizens are telling me. I don't know what it's telling everybody else on council, but it's been telling me in the residential zone, SR and UR. They would like to see that going to zero. If you exclude resident occupied, resident owned, owner occupied, owner occupied. And unlike what you're hearing, I'm hearing a lot of people say grandfather the existing ones. And those will eventually all go to zero over time, whether it's voluntarily or involuntarily. Voluntarily, they're going to sell their house someday, so that'll go down. Voluntarily, some of them will not renew. We've already seen five drop out, I think it is, in residential just since this whole exercise, they've just let it expire and they never renewed it. So over time, voluntarily, they will go down to zero. Involuntarily, this will be the fastest one group and that's where they violate. Hopefully we will have a two-strike rule. That's yet to be seen. But if a two-strike rule is put into effect, true nuisance STRs or safety STRs, we will have a way as a city to get rid of them. So I see the total number, I guess, instead of the one sixty-two, I guess we're now one fifty-four. That's going to come down very fast. And that would be a hundred and thirteen in SR and UR's total minus the resident occupied, owner resident occupied. So we're going to see forty-two to twenty-eight, plus twenty-eight, about seventy STRs eliminated pretty quickly. Trying to get to what you're trying to accomplish, which is you don't want them in, in the residential zones, the SR and the UR. So some of the proposals I'm going to make or amendments is to try to accomplish what you're doing. What I'm trying to do is prevent the flaws in your ordinance. The definition being one of the biggest flaws where you have rented or utilized. Fourteen sixty-two clearly states in both parts, title five and title eighteen, that it's rented or leased. And that's what the language is in the current fourteen sixty-two. So I'm listening, but I'm also listening to the business owners that have approached me where we have to consider how fast we bring down the STRs because you don't even have enough lots in the commercial zones. If you add them all up, if you did a lift and shift, which we talked about a year or so ago, you can't even do that. There's not enough lots available, let, let alone the reality of that. You just can't buy commercial lots at the same as you can buy a residential lot. You could. It is possible, just not probable. So when I factor in all of the things you're trying to accomplish, what the citizens are telling me in large numbers, I have to try to temper what they're telling me with a little bit of wisdom on how fast we bring it down. So there, there are, I'm going to propose some caps. These are as low as I could convince at least one council member to agree with me. Hopefully there will be others that will go. I tried to go lower than what I'm going to make a motion to do, but I could not get people to agree to it. It would be too low a number and our businesses would be damaged and our city's revenue would be damaged at a time when we're hoping to do a mill levy reduction. So let me start with the first thing. I wanted to make sure we had STR units defined as one rental or leased, which we do in fourteen sixty-two. Then we wanted to create a two-strike rule, which I have seen in fourteen sixty-two. It is covered. I spoke with Robert about creating a penalty. I don't know if the penalty language is now in fourteen sixty-two and that would at the council meeting, we, or when we spoke, we had talked about a ten K minimum. I think that was an ordinance that was proposed. In talking with Robert, I think that is a wise thing to have a penalty if somebody wants to violate the STR ordinance. Instead of having it a minimum, I think Robert will agree that it's better to have it a table based like all of the other penalties. And then we give the municipal judge a range, and I think we spoke on the phone, a range of about three K to ten K. I believe the city attorney may add some thoughts on that because there is a maximum amount you can actually impose at a city level. But there's a way to get it up to the ten and I think he'll cover how that would work. But it, it could be from three to ten K for a violation. And I think, is that language in the current fourteen sixty-two?
The language is at five twenty-two fifty. It provides the council can set the penalties later by a separate resolution.
That is true. Okay, so we've covered that one, Robert. That is true. Okay, so we've covered that one, Robert. And if you you've seen that, do you agree with that language that would cover what you and I had talked about and what you, Frank, and Catherine had tried to get for penalties?
In fairness to you, Councilmember Neil, go ahead and do your presentation, because you've got a lot of points that you want to make on this. I have different points about that, so the context won't be appropriate.
Very good, very good. Okay, so the penalty one is there, and then a requirement for liability insurance. I would like to see that added. Now, how do you want to do it? That is the first one that is not in there, and I drafted some language for the city attorney. Do you want me to read that to you, what I drafted?
I would suggest, Councilmember, that you make these in the form of motions.
Okay.
And we'll just go through them.
Okay, then let me go back to the email.
In the insurance, when a council member, you were proposing to amend five point two two point oh two oh with a new subsection, and?
Let me pull it up. I'm sorry, it's a lot of paperwork going back and forth. It would be a five two two zero two zero N liability paragraph that I will read to everybody. I would also like to talk about adding a an additional definition, following the primary residence definition, an owner resident definition. So let me go ahead and just do it logically by reading.
Councilman Neil, if you could do them one at a time, I think it'd be helpful to all of us.
I will do it anyway. The council would like me to do this. Okay, the first thing is, I would, I'd like to make a motion to add a definition for a resident owner STR unit in chapter five dash two two dash zero one zero. As as the following, resident owner short-term rental unit means the short-term rental unit is the primary resident of the owner of the dwelling. We're going to do this one at a time.
If is that your motion then, Rusty?
That's my motion.
Okay, and then if I second it, we can then have discussion.
We can have discussion.
I will second that. Do you want to describe what the purpose of that is, or?
Well, there is the potential, if you just have resident, we have a resident occupied or a resident occupied short-term rental unit, you could have a, somebody come in, occup- or rent out a a long-term rental, and then bring in a bunch of friends, and it become a, and they could actually STR it while they're there. What this prevents is non-invested people to be considered the ones that don't count in the cap.
The owner occupied.
The owner occupied in the cap, but it's a resident owner STR unit, not just a resident STR, because a resident can become a resident, or somebody can become a resident in twenty-two days. They've got a lot of people becoming residents over in the hotel, voting in our elections. I'm trying to prevent skewed elections with misuse of STRs. That's my discussion point.
Okay, that makes sense. Anyone else? Only, I I'm sorry, Robert. I I just want to thank Rusty for doing a deep dive on some of the issues that would come from the Citizens Initiative ballot question that may not address some of some definition problems, which two years ago was one of my major concerns, is that the bottom line is our code, yes, I want to uphold the code, but our code did not specifically address short-term rentals. So whatever happens on December twelfth, I think Rusty's effort to bring clarity to something that was very ambiguous is commendable. And I do support this definition. I know some of these are a little wordy, but I think he makes a very good point when it comes to folks that renters could be considered the permanent resident and then sublet space in a facility as a short-term rental.
Robert, so Councilmember Neil, I appreciate your sincerity to drilled in on this and to see how you can make make improvements to what you're recommending on this particular ordinance. And I know we're going to go through all of your amendments, so I just want to tell you upfront, I have a fundamental problem with this entire ordinance that we're proposing, because as one of our community members said to me recently, we're trying to compare what the citizens are bringing as an initiative, which is an apple, to a basket of fruit. And what this ordinance is, is a basket of fruit. No one has a problem with, I mean, I wouldn't say no one has a problem. We generally, and I say we generally, that is council, that is a community on both sides of this issue, absolutely agree that we need Title V changes, and we need Title V structure. But in putting this all in one basket on the on the ballot, I believe this is unnecessarily confusing the community on an issue. It's like, I would, my recommendation is just take the stuff that you are wanting to see, and that is, you're wanting to see caps, you're wanting to see some consideration with what's happening with the current short-term rental owners, and make that your pitch, the thing of Title V, all of Title V. I've tried repeatedly to bring Title V up, let's solve it, it's something everybody agrees to, you know, minus a few little changes. Keep that separate, don't confuse people by trying to say, oh, yeah, well, we need these Title V pieces in place. Well, we all know that, but it's not something that council needs to take to the to the community. It's something we just set as it's a it's a regulatory process, it's a licensing process, it's pretty straightforward. And I recognize you're you're trying to clarify some definitions, so it makes it problematic for me to to vote for these, what are commendable insights and changes, in the framework of a document, which I think is clumsy, confusing, and unnecessary. And so now we're at that point, and I'm just letting you know upfront, as much as I appreciate the work you're doing, I cannot support it in the context of this document. So if you're prepared to review the document and strip out all Title V and say, we'll get to that, we could have had it, we, well, anyway, it doesn't matter about that, we can, we'll get to that after the election, let's just put what the issues are, what the pros and cons are on both sides, and it's clear, it's simple for everybody. So I just want to let you know upfront that my vote will reflect that.
I understand. Thank you, Robert. But I did listen to you.
I know you did.
Okay.
Anybody else? Karen?
Excuse me. I would like to draw your attention to five point two two point zero two zero, item B. I think this provision potentially addresses your concern. It states that with regard to?
Will you say it again? I'm trying to find it.
Sure, it's early on in the ordinance.
Just a number.
Five point two two point zero two zero. So page two. Item B.
Bravo.
Bravo, yes, sir. Yes. So this is a section that deals with licensing limitations and requirements to obtain said license. And it specifically states that short-term rental business license may only be issued to owners of properties, as evidenced by on the record or the recorded deed for the property, who are also one of the following, a natural person, or a trust, if the trustee is the trust of the trust is a natural person, or a business entity legally registered with the Colorado Secretary of State to conduct business in the state of Colorado.
Karen, I'm aware of that. The reason why I'm adding this definition is because in the Citizens Initiative, it there's going to be, it contradicts that, because they say owner slash operator, meaning an owner or an operator. And I'm trying to clarify that an operator could be somebody that is allowed to get it by the owner. So I think it needs to be very clearly stated. So there's, we can remove some of the confusion about the definitions that are in the Citizens Initiative.
My understanding from legal guidance previously was that they needed to, well, there was, there's a category of primary residents, and there's metrics clearly associated with that, because that is identifiable. And then in terms of who can obtain the license, it is the property owner that meets these criteria. So that was the the box that was drawn for us and presented, and what planning commission was was bringing back to you all.
Okay, I saw. My motion stands. I reviewed it all, and there's a logic behind it.
I'm not sure. I have, I mean, I have people signed up to talk about this resolution, but I don't know if they want to talk about this amendment. So if you would like, okay, it looks like Arnie would like to speak about this.
Let's do, let's get through the amendments, and then we can take testimony for the, for the actual.
Sit down, Arnie.
So we need to vote on that.
Yeah. So Suzanne, do you have what his motion is?
I think between Jeff and I, we have it, and then we also have, I know you've sent this to us.
Yes, right.
So, yes.
This is the resident owner short-term rental unit.
Okay, and I I'm going to do a voice vote. So Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
No.
Nakai? No. Connors?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yeah.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes for three.
Okay. Next one, and this is a Title V. Add a requirement for liability insurance on the dwelling provided by the owner at the time of licensing, seeing in the amount of five hundred K.
No, I always recommend it should be a million.
But let me make the motion, and then we can get into discussion. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to add the requirement for liability insurance on the on an STR dwelling unit that is provided by the owner at the time of licensing in the amount of one million dollars. This would be added in five dash twenty-two dash zero two zero N.
Is there a second for that?
Robert? It's not.
So I have a first of Neil, is there a second? I'm sorry.
I'll second it, and then I will begin the discussion.
Yes, okay.
And then I'm in. I have a question of both staff and the attorney. Do we have such a liability requirement for any other project or development request in the city limits?
We, I don't know who's answering.
My guess is no, but I haven't researched this.
I have not either. I don't know the answer at this time.
Karen and I can answer a little bit. When we have someone that wants to use our facility, or has a special event, or anything like that, we do require like them to list us as additionally insured on their insurance policy, and that is the minimum requirement, just the one million dollars. And for TUPs and different things like that, contracts that we have with, like Keywit and different people like that, we also get that amount in liability insurance listed.
Okay, thank you. Just, but that's separate. That's separate from home insurance liability. That's for, that's for doing an event with the city, which you can carry a liability separate for. But if you want to insure your home, the liability sits separately. It's not, it's not done the same way.
And the reason why I listened to Robert and and Frank's and Catherine's motion last week, and had further conversations with Robert is, there are situations where somebody could pay cash for a home, and your insurance is normally mandated by the mortgage company, so if you pay cash, there may not be any liability. So if the ordinance were to succeed, and this is where I'm trying to listen to the citizens and both sides, this would be mandatory insurance on an STR. So even if they paid cash, they've got to have liability. So if they start a fire, and it burns down the neighbor, the neighbor can come after the STR owner and make them pay instead of the neighbor's insurance paying for it, and his rates going up. So it's, it provides protection to neighbors around the STR.
I have no problem with liability, but I'm not going to set a million dollar cash amount.
I, is there a different amount that you think is a?
I think just saying liability insurance, and because that could, that could.
And do it by table, it can be separate.
And because it could change with economic conditions, and if it's in an ordinance that requires us to amend the ordinance in the law, I think that if we just required the liability insurance, and then set those amounts by resolution or something from time to time, I think would be more effective.
I've heard you. Let me make a.
But before you, I have another question. If anyone can answer this, this is a general question to the staff, and possibly those of you dealing in real estate. Does Airbnb or VRBO require liability insurance for people to list their home on their platform?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't. I know that, I do know that most owners that rent their homes, whether short-term or long-term, carry renters' insurance as a separate policy.
Yeah.
But that's separate even from liability.
Yeah.
So, because that covers the interior, because just just requiring liability insurance alone only covers the exterior, it does not cover the interior, or if something should happen to someone in your home. So.
Okay.
So let me make an amendment to mine. I'd like to make a motion to add a requirement for liability insurance on the short-term rental dwelling provided by the owner at the time of licensing. Period.
Second.
And without, just indulge me as the scribbler, without the part about the in and amount established from time to time by council.
That would be reasonable.
That would be fine.
Just on a side note, I checked, and Airbnb does offer liability insurance to their hosts. I'm sure VRBO does too, as other platforms do as well. There's host liability insurance.
Yeah, there are those that fly under the radar.
Right, so there are some that don't use those platforms. The question was, do they? Anyway, so I looked it up.
I just want to protect the neighbors.
Sure.
So before you run it to the vote again, Rusty, should your proposed ordinance fail, I'm happy to support that change in when we review things at the end of elections.
Understood.
Me too.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
So, so by asking that it that they do provide liability, if they are on one of those platforms, then they will have the option to select that.
That is.
With the platform.
That's fine.
And if they are not on those platforms, then they will have the option to get that through their insurance carrier.
I'm done.
Okay.
So I got, I got one real quick. Rusty, Rusty, I have the same issue kind of Robert does. I don't actually have a problem with any of your amendments. I just think, I just don't like doing it the way we're doing it. I think we should do, I think we should just do Title eighteen and not Title V, so.
I think we should do, I think we should just do Title eighteen and not Title V. So I don't want you to think I'm voting against you just because I don't agree with you.
That's fine, Catherine. Nothing personal.
That's it exactly. Thanks.
Arnie, nothing personal. I'm just trying to listen to both sides. As nasty as we got, I just want to.
Are you, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys clear on that? Uh, no.
Makai?
No.
Connors?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four to three.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to change paragraph five dot two-two dot zero two zero G to the following. Established cap, the maximum number of short-term rental units within the SR and UR zoning districts shall not exceed the established cap within such zoning districts. Established cap in those districts shall be as follows. SR, one percent. UR, one percent. Exclusions to the SR and UR cap count are resident owner, short-term rental units. No caps or maximum number of short-term rental business license shall be applicable within the AG, NC, CC, and CBD zoning districts. Short-term rental units are prohibited within the MFS, MFU, SC, MHP, P slash SPL, and HSCLI zoning districts. No cap numbers are established for PUD zones, which will be governed by the deeded restrictions established at the time of each individual subdivision's creation and enforced in accordance with the bylaws of the respective homeowners association. Those STRs that are covered by section seven, which we'll get to in a bit, which is the grandfathering, will not be included in the cap and will be governed by section seven.
Rusty, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
And I'll second your motion. I would suggest that instead of bylaws, it should be covenants. Because that's where those restrictions are found. Bylaws are the operations of their board. The covenants are the restrictions on the development. And if, and covenants need to be recorded with the deed. Yeah, they follow the property.
Okay.
That's just a suggestion.
I will change that one sentence. I'm not going to read the whole paragraph.
Just the word bylaws changed to.
And this is to keep HOAs in power. Whatever you moved into in your, your subdivision that has HOAs and caps or no caps, this allows you, if you're in a PUD, to stay in a PUD, to stay within what you signed up for when you bought your house. In the future, any subdivision created, if they create a covenants that says, or a deed restriction that you can't have in STRs, then that's going to govern the future. But anyway, it'll be for the PUD, no cap numbers are established for PUD zones, which will be governed by the deeded restrictions established at the time of each individual subdivision's creation and enforced in accordance with the covenants of the respective homeowners association, HOA. And the, and the rest of the paragraph remains the same.
A question on my filing has covenants that have been recorded with my deed, but we don't have an HOA. Is the HOA necessary in the Senate or in this paragraph? I, I don't know.
It's my understanding, because I tried to figure this out. If the HOA expires, right, the covenants are still attached to the house.
Yes.
If the subdivision wants to reestablish an HOA and then enforce the covenants that are deed, I mean, it's attached to the deed of the house, they have the authority to do that.
It takes an HOA to enforce.
Or citizens to take it to the court, to a court of law.
To the court process.
Correct. So what we're, I'm trying to do is empower at the lowest possible level, which is based on subdivision when they were created. SRs are not subdivisions. URs are not subdivisions. So they would stand with lowering it down to one percent. And, and eventually we could adjust and make them zero, but I just don't want to go to zero.
Well, here, here's my follow-on question. Can you substitute the word HOA with the word filing? Because many filings do not have HOAs and I would think that's the lowest common denominator is a filing.
No, because sometimes HOAs go away intentionally.
True, and what's left is still a filing with recorded covenants.
Right. The HOA is who enforces it.
No, it can be enforced also by the court. If there is no HOA, a citizen can bring a civil case against someone who has violated a recorded covenant. I'm just, I, I'm not arguing with you at all. I'm just trying to figure out, is the lowest common denominator an HOA or a filing?
It would be filing.
I don't know. I'm asking prob- probably the attorney to weigh in here.
Because then if the HOA goes away, you're still bound by the covenants versus the HOA. So I don't want to make that.
Yeah, that's the answer.
Yeah. So it's with the HOA or the court, the courts. A court of law, appropriate jurisdiction.
Councilmember Neil, the, the original language that you're seeking to change sets caps for the SR and UR zones as hard as actual numbers.
Harden up.
Proposed to substitute percents. Percent of what? Or what are we?
SR, I can give you the numbers. One percent would be. It's.
One, it's one percent of the existing available units.
So it'd be eighteen, eighteen, if we're talking about total lots. Eighteen in, in the SR zone. As it is today.
If we say it's one percent, it would be one percent of the available housing units.
I apologize for interjecting, but the terminology that we were using at a staff level was either percent of developed lots or percent of total lots.
That's what I'm looking at. The total lots or develop lots. Develop lots changes. The total lots doesn't change.
Because he's talking about PUDs.
No, I'm on the SR right now. I'm going one at a time. SR, there are eighteen fifty-seven total lots. Okay, so that would be eighteen. If we went with one percent. And then we can adjust that eighteen. I would rather leave it at one percent of the total lots. And then one percent, yeah, total lots.
And Rusty, the, the other part of this equation is that legacy STRs
Do not count.
Do not count.
And I'll get to that later. Yep. Because those all potentially go to zero and it's left with eighteen in all of the SR zones.
So the percentages of our housing lots in those zoning districts.
I'm sorry.
The percentages of, of housing lots.
Housing lots, yeah, total housing lots.
Okay.
Because someone could build a new house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm mending my motion. So it is one percent of total housing lots for both the SR and the UR.
Rusty, should you include the language that said excluding legacy STR licenses?
That's how I addressed it by saying those STRs that are covered under section seven.
Okay.
Section seven is the grandfathering of the license language and I'll get to that in a minute. And will not be included in the cap and will be governed by section seven.
So I have a question for Karen. So Karen, in Title V, we set the caps, but in Title eighteen, we set the density. Why aren't they both either in, in Title V or, or in Title eighteen?
In Title eighteen, it will be simply a.
I, I get, I get that Rusty. I, it says, refer back to Title V, but when you go down to Title eighteen dot seven eight dot oh five oh eight, it says no short-term rental unit within the SR zone district shall be located within five hundred feet. Blah blah. So it's got the distancing in the, in the Title eighteen, but it has the caps in Title V. So I'm trying to understand why the caps and the distancing aren't both together in Title eighteen.
Because Title eighteen deals with placement on land and separation between the uses. Title V deals with the number of licenses. And so that's why they're split apart like that.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I have another, I'd like the attorney to chime in on this particular part, please. And it has to do with the structure of the ordinance and with the change you were seeking to, to make, Councilmember Neil. I appreciate your wanting to make sure the grandfather provisions are very clearly set up. But what, what actually gets codified into our ordinances, section seven doesn't get integrated into the ordinances. So that's really transitional provisions. So I think there's potentially a technicality there in terms of trying to specify what the caps apply or do not apply to. That probably should appear within Title V. So it actually shows up in what gets integrated into the municipal code.
And something else I'd like to point out.
I'm just referring to the grandfather provision in section seven. That's why I'm pointing to the section seven in our ordinance.
Jeff, could we integrate some of the language in section seven into item G to, to, to discuss that legacy.
Yeah, section seven is under Title V, the licensing.
Right.
Where the current business license operating short-term rental businesses will.
Yeah, if, if it's a, if it's transitory in nature, it, your attention is still to have them offset against the caps.
So not included in.
Not included in the cap. I mean, I didn't see any inconsistency with that or any problem with doing that going forward. Once the transitory condition expires, that language ceases to have any relevance, becomes dead letter. Some point in the future, we can repeal that section.
Well, I just want to ask, when you're proposing these changes and proposing these caps, it's so counter to creating law, which is equally applied to all residents. And when you start saying you're lucky, you get a cap. You're one of the lucky ones who gets a cap. Or you're one of the lucky ones who has a legacy. This whole concept of us picking winners and losers is antithetical to what a lot of us believe. So why, why are we, why are we trying to massage this like this? In, I, I just, I'm at a loss to understand what gives some people the right to have a favored status versus other people.
Robert, all I can say is the courts have supported having caps. So caps have been successfully defended in courts and that's why I'm putting some caps in there. And it also is a buffer. So our businesses don't go from, from you know, forty to, from seventy to zero. Because if they're providing sixty-one percent of the lodging revenue and God knows how many businesses rely on the visitors that stay in those sixty-one percent of our lodging, I, I'm just drawing a number. Since sixty-one percent of the lodging revenue comes from STRs, I have to assume that if sixty-one percent go away, some of our businesses are going to suffer. And while we may try to heal some of the businesses with a mill leveller discussion, we need to be conscious of losing that revenue too fast for our businesses. I don't want them to go under. So and we may have overshot.
I just have a comment about what you just said. Because I, the way I see it, and, and I just find a little bit of hypocrisy, is that the Citizens Initiative also picks winners and losers. So I, I don't know that that's exactly what we're doing. I mean, if that's how you describe it, I would say that both are picking winners and losers. So, and I don't mean that in a negative connotation. I just see that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And so I don't think that we're being inconsistent in that perspective. So just a thought that I have to share.
Thank you both for your perspective.
And I recognize we'll probably have a waitlist. Don't know whether it's big or small, but by having caps, yep, you may have to wait. Maybe you want to invest over in the commercial zone instead.
Councilmember Harvey. Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I hesitate to even do this because we have not adopted Bob's rules of order yet, but I think Councilman Neil has some substantive amendments to add to this particular action on the table or item on the table. And I would like to call the question on this amendment.
Very good.
What's, what you mean by calling the question is every? Vote on, on calling the question. Whether we agree, we're done with the discussion.
No, she just called the question. So now we do a vote. And if the vote passes, then we go to vote on what his amendment is.
Good with that. Yes, clarity.
So I have a motion from Harvey to call the question. Do I have a second?
I did second that.
Thank you. Okay, Makai? No. Connors?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluwaga?
No.
Okay, motion carries four, three. Questions called.
My no is the, the vote, what's your motion now? Now that we've gone through all this, can you clarify for us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would, I make a motion to change paragraph five dot twenty-two dash zero two zero G to read established cap, the maximum number of short-term rental units within the SR and UR zoning districts shall not exceed the established cap within such zoning districts. The established cap in those districts shall be as follows. SR, one percent of total lots. UR, one percent of total lots. Exclusions to the SR and UR cap count are resident own, owner, short-term rental units. No caps or maximum number of short-term rental business licenses shall be applicable within the AG, NC, CC, and CBD zoning districts. Short-term rental units are prohibited within the MFS, MFU, SC, MHP, P slash SPL, and HSCLI zoning districts. No cap numbers are established for PUD zones, which will be governed by the deeded restrictions established at the time of each individual subdivision's creation and enforced in accordance with the covenants of the respective homeowners association or court. The STRs that are covered by section seven in Title eighteen will not be included in any cap and will be governed by section seven, Title eighteen.
And that was the motion you made. You just amended it and we already had a second by Councilmember Case. Okay. So are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Title eighteen, section seven. Title eight, section seven, Title eighteen.
One more time, that section seven will not appear in Title eighteen. It is not part of the language to be integrated into Title eighteen.
On mine it is. It's eighteen dot seventy-eight dot zero five zero. It's the short-term rentals and then it says section seven, which follows section six, which is eighteen seventy-eight oh five zero.
Right. And, and I apologize. I'm, I appreciate you guys willing, being willing to clarify this. Because section seven, or section six sets out changes within Title eighteen. And when you get to section seven, it deals with current business licenses. And when you get to section seven, it deals with current business licenses operating short term rental businesses. And yes, it references what happens in these other districts, but it doesn't have its own code number. It doesn't say amend or insert title, you know, section eighteen, blah, 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 to read as follows. I've always viewed this and understood it to be part of the transitional provisions, similar to like section eight or section nine. I I guess I don't.
So he needs to leave out Title eighteen and say not that section seven is excluded?
I think if there's a provision in there that he wants included, it needs to actually be added into. That um paragraph he's looking at now, that paragraph G.
So Karen.
I believe. If I might, I believe the intention of the council has been to have section seven be part of the law. That it would be adopted just as the other sections of this ordinance are adopted. So if you want to make an amendment to make, to have us make sure that that's the result, we'll do it. We'll just stick a section.
I will clarify that section seven is a part of fourteen sixty two.
Okay.
Because it is. That's what I'm looking at. It's in the packet. Section seven is right there.
This reference for the code.
So that it becomes a codified.
Okay, which?
That's section six. This is section six.
Which one is that? Well, then the grammatically the same.
Yeah.
With fourteen oh six, forty one, and then table eighteen oh nine, zero nine zero, section six, which will be here. And then here you have section seven. And you've got all of this. After you do that. I guess what we could do is all of these things would have to be. Jeff would have to take care of what title, location, would it go under section eighteen seventy eight, zero five zero? Karen, where would it go? I mean, you've got these. Where does it go?
I just call it zero six zero. Number section seven is new section eighteen seventy eight oh six zero per connotation.
I would actually suggest it belongs in Title V since it deals with licensing.
So put it under five twenty two oh two zero and make it.
Um, section in Article five, we'll figure it, we'll do it. If you want it in Article five, we'll put it in Article five.
Do we, uh, will we be able to take any action then until we see the new draft, or can we?
No, the voters have to approve.
Oh, no, 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 no. I mean, before we put this, um, refer it to the ballot.
Is that what you're saying? You'd like to see the language again?
I'm I'm I don't care personally, but I just wonder if we have to.
You do not have.
Okay.
You may.
That's all right. I'm happy.
Rusty?
Yes.
So I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand here. So what you're basically saying is currently we have approximately four percent. Of the total houses in S R that are licensed, give or take. A little bit. And so what you're saying is that four percent is not going to count towards the one percent that you're putting in Title eighteen. So essentially, we would have five percent total.
Initially, that would be correct.
Okay.
And then as you lose them through the two strike rule or uh attrition. That four percent eventually goes down to one percent, and this would be a ballot initiative. It would be for a two year period of time while we can see what the date, the effect is to the businesses and the city revenue. That is correct.
All right, thank you.
But to your point, yes, that would be in addition, and then it comes down.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so this would be placed as five twenty two dot zero two zero. Oh.
Or as the attorney says.
Okay, as as located by the city attorney. Okay, do I need to read the whole thing, or can I just say everything except the last two sentences would be? Those S T Rs that are covered by. The. Current business license operating short term rental businesses paragraph. As located by the city attorney, because I'm going to talk about that exact verbatim paragraph.
That, is that okay, Suzanne?
Is that sufficient?
We ready for the vote?
Sure. Connors?
Oh, absolutely not.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Nakai?
Oh.
Thank you. Motion carries for three.
And then uh I'd like to make a motion to amend table eighteen dot zero nine dot zero nine zero, table abuses. Row uh by adding. Row four, short term rental units in accordance with chapter five dot twenty two and section eighteen dot seventy eight dot zero five zero. So that under the S R, it would be P C. Permitted conditionally under U R. Permitted conditionally under A G. Permitted under N C permitted, under C C permitted. Under C B D permitted, under P U D. Permitted conditionally.
So Rusty, one of the things the planning commission is doing right now is getting rid of permitted conditionally because we don't have a definition for it that works. So they either need to be Ps or Cs.
Well, until such time as.
I mean.
I mean, I'm using the language that is being forced right now.
I get that, but I'm just saying we could make planning commissions life easier down the road. They don't have to go amend this after. We've already done all of these. Through the planning commission table stuff, so. Um, and then my other question is maybe for Karen or Jeff. If we do it permitted, does that? They they still have to have a license for it, correct?
It's just use.
It's just use. That's all. I just want to make sure it's just use. So. I don't have a problem with them. It's just, I think the PCs where you want them to be conditional just need to be conditional.
Let me.
Well, your citizens initiative is going to have some problems.
Hold on, I I'm gonna let Karen Karen speak and then I'm. Yeah, Karen can.
Provide some other background and 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 such here. And um, yeah, Councilmember Nakai has been very diligent about joining us regularly for those workshops. And um, there is interest in getting rid of that term PC going forward. But we are in a situation now where you've got this transition in terms of trying to make sure things jive under the current code. And then what does that look like when potentially you have an ordinance to um adopt the restructured code? So right now, um, Councilmember Nakai is a hundred percent correct that there is no clear definition of permitted conditionally. Um, the practice is basically that, um, yes, you can do this use in the zone provided you meet current or or a number of conditions associated with it. So um, when you see in our current table of uses, something that's just permitted. Uh, that typically isn't the flag saying, hey, you need to look at these other conditions as part of citing this use. So that's why this recommendation that came out of the planning commission actually listed P C in all of these categories is they wanted to draw your attention. Back to those standards within eighteen and then the licensing provisions that then also. Um, you need a license in order to do the use. Eighteen says this is where the use can occur. So that's, that's the recommendation, and um, you could certainly change those PCs to a P. But I worry um that if all your planning staff gets run over by a bus, that the new folks don't have that verbal explanation of how to apply the the code in good practice. So the, that's why you see the PC for all of those, but please continue with what you would prefer to have happen.
I'm gonna go ahead and let Councilmember Harvey speak.
Well, I I was just gonna say, bravo. No, until uh such time that we we uh consider the planning commission's recommendation to code, we we stick with precedence.
Yeah, I I strongly agree because it will be interpreted if you do a P that they're permitted.
Never seen before.
And then the other stuff all goes to the wayside because we're now saying it's, they're all permitted, and and we're not. We're saying there's a condition. Now we have to look at what conditions exist somewhere else.
Exactly, and and soon enough, the council will have that in front of them to consider.
Okay, I stand on the motion using P C.
So I go back to all of that, then they should just all stay P C, Rusty, not have them go to P's where you were suggesting some of them went to P's. Based on what Karen said, you want them all to be looked at, right? You want them all to have.
No, there's no caps in the A G, N C, C C, and C B D. Those are uncapped, so they're just permitted.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, I misunderstood. I got it. Sorry, I misunderstood that aspect. I got it now.
And the uh S R and U R are P C because they're capped.
But yeah, yeah, no, yeah, we're good. Okay, I I missed, I missed that. Sorry, I missed that front piece there.
It's it's confusing, but believe me.
All right, thank you.
Did you give a second?
No.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ready to call this over? Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yeah.
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Nakai?
Oh.
Connors?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries for three. Is there more?
You know, while you're thinking about it, I have just one real simple thing.
Yep.
It's to add bear proof trash cans as a requirement. Where, I don't know where. I don't care where.
Would that be?
The city attorney can figure it out. Karen can suggest where.
Ma- mayor.
Hang on one second. Karen's trying to tell me something.
Well, I was, where, where were you looking at the good housekeeping standards?
All I was mentioning is that's one place these, this bear proof containers thing could be dealt with.
I don't care where.
That may not have it being dealt with in this ordinance, but in a subsequent rulemaking.
What we, we have.
Good neighbor policy.
Uh, a good neighbor policy, which becomes an affidavit if signed by the licensed um applicant, and it should be there.
Yeah, that's a good place.
I have it as a note, so when we finalize the good neighbor policy, we'll make sure it's in there.
Yeah.
Well, let me, can I, I'll make a motion to add bear proof trash cans to the good neighbor policy. Language.
I'll second it.
Second. Third.
It's not something that we're, it's an administrative thing down the road.
Administrative.
Yeah, yeah, so we're fine.
It's administrative, but if it is included in the good neighbor policies and the licensed applicant signs that, it becomes an affidavit. It's a sworn statement, and they they are held liable.
How about we do a consensus for this one being?
Very good.
It's not part of the ordinance. It's part of the good neighbor policy.
Okay.
Do a council consensus.
Sure, I'm for it. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I'm barely for it.
Actually, there's lots of people in town that could be used, use a bear proof trash can.
Yeah.
I see them every day.
And my last is the section seven language. I can do it one of two ways. I make a motion to remove the last sentence in section seven in fourteen sixty two. Or I can read it without it. What would you prefer?
Read it without.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to change section seven, which we will figure out where its location is. Um, to the following, section seven. Current business licensees operating short term rental businesses. Period. Provided a current invalid business license holder operating a short term rental business. Applies for a short term rental business license within two months of the effective date of this ordinance. The prohibition of short term rental businesses in certain zoning districts. The distance restrictions within section eighteen dot seventy eight dot zero five zero B eight. And the caps established in chapter five dash twenty two shall not apply to such new short term. Rental business license applications or subsequent renewals for the short term rental unit made by the same license holder. So that grandfather's, the people, not the property.
I'll second.
Yeah, because it contradicts other things. Yeah.
Any discussion or do you want me just to do the vote?
Any discussion?
Okay, Labar?
Yeah.
Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Nakai?
No.
Connors?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes for three. I see, are you?
I'm done.
Okay. Anyone else? Ain't no one else? How about public comments?
Is it, have, do we have a motion now to adopt the amended resolution?
We adopted them all individually.
I know, but just total. I'll make a motion to approve. Ordinance number fourteen sixty two, series twenty twenty three, as amended this evening. And we would approve resolution nine oh eight as a whole with set amendments.
I I want to second it, but there's a language change that needs to be made in resolution nine oh eight. To be consistent with what we just did, we need to strike that.
We have this full ballot title amendment. This is what we approved.
So this goes away.
Yes.
Yeah, I second your motion.
Okay.
Yeah, so this goes away.
Okay, so we have a motion for nine oh eight and a second. Now, public comment.
Yeah, because the motion that Councilmember Case made was actually fourteen sixty two and nine oh.
Gotcha.
We have asked how both were amended.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay.
Yes.
Andrew Smith, are you still there? Okay. Mike Nakai?
Good evening again, council. Point Nakai will in part. Uh, my apologies for reading from a prepared statement, read and look you in the eye as I speak, but I'm trying to fit this into three minutes.
Excuse me, Mike, could you speak?
Okay. This council has a distinction of being the first council in Little Park that has ever had one of its ordinances successfully overturned by a citizens reference. Tonight, this council is poised to set yet another first. Tonight, they are about to abdicate their legislative duty and place a municipal ordinance on a ballot next to the citizens initiative, citizens initiative ordinance. I have not found a single person. Who can give me an example where this has ever happened before. Our charter lays out a specific process for passage of an ordinance, which does not include an option for the council to put a regular municipal ordinance. Before the voters. That process is reserved for amendments to the charter section of our municipal code. That process is reserved for amendments to the charter section of our municipal code. Dan? This is a home-rule city. We don't like it when the state bigfoots our local governance, but at the request of this council, our city attorneys have found a state statute which allows the council to do what they're about to do tonight. I don't blame the city attorney, he's paid to do what he's asked to do. Okay? So ask yourself, why would the council do this? This council has, for over a year, refused to listen to the citizens of Woodland Park and pass an STR ordinance in the best interest of those citizens. Ordinance fourteen thirty-one was overturned by the voters. This council refused to pass ordinance fourteen fifty-five because it's mostly the same and would likely suffer the same fate. So the only recourse left to them is to change a few sentences, rename it to fourteen sixty-two, and place it on the ballot in order to, wait for it, confuse the voters. Mark my words, this council and their surrogates will speak in favor of their ordinance with the argument, see, our ordinance has Title V section with penalties and a good neighbor policy. Theirs doesn't. What they won't say is that the only reason fourteen sixty-one does not have an accompanying Title V is because this council voted it down in the last two meetings. Let me repeat that. This council voted down our Title V in the last two meetings. How many surveys, like the one presented in the last meeting, do you need to begin, do you need to see to begin to listen to the citizens? How many successful petitions do you need to see to begin to listen? A wise man once said, when you're in a hole, stop digging. Stop digging tonight and simply let the citizens' initiative go to an unobstructed ballot. Thank you.
And then, next speaker is Mary Sikowski.
Thank you. My name is Mary Sikowski. Unlike Mike, I apologize for not having a prepared statement. I didn't know exactly what I was gonna say tonight. Just didn't know where this was gonna go. I am a Woodland Park citizen. I am a voter in Woodland Park. I am a short-term rental owner. I am one of many who would be hurt by the citizens' petition initiative. I would be put out of business, if you will, with a cabin that I own with my parents, who stay in the cabin when they're visiting, and I short-term rent it when they're not here. It wouldn't, it wouldn't happen anymore. They wouldn't be able to come visit and stay in that cabin and muck and let it sit empty the rest of the time. There's a lot of owners in Woodland Park that have one of those licenses that are in that same boat, or it's their second home. There are people in this audience who have businesses that hinge on and are created to serve Woodland Park short-term rentals. They, they hire cleaners, they help with property management. They will be put out of business with something like this citizens' petition ordinance. So that is why I do support ordinance fourteen sixty-two. I initially signed up to speak on fourteen fifty-five, but it's changing, so there's that. I do want to ask, because I'm confused, and I know you can't answer, but this is just for discussion, the ballot verbiage does not have the specifics of what fourteen sixty-one will, or fourteen sixty-two will entail, but I assume it would be in the ballot packet because it's sort of vague on the verbiage in the ballot. So I'm just curious about that. And then, you know, one thing that, that I want to say is that I don't think we need caps. I don't think we need distance requirements. I don't think we need a lot of this, anyway. I think that Woodland Park is not an economy that is going to be overrun by short-term rentals. It has never been overrun by short-term rentals, and it's not heading that direction. And the reason why is because these houses aren't lucrative anymore for people to buy because interest rates have gone up so much. So it's harder for them to buy them, and we're not a year-round community that can, that can service the cash flow needs that an investor might need to create their rate of return for short-term rentals in Woodland Park. So I don't think we need any of that stuff. However, I think it is an acceptable compromise to include those into the ordinance, given, you know, thirteen hundred or so people saying that they want even further restrictions, which I think would be a really bad thing for our community. So thank you for listening. Sorry, it's a little bit more eloquent. Have a good night.
That's all the public comment. Oh, that's right, I forgot. I'm so sorry.
Honorable mayor, city council members, my name is Arnie Sparnens. So I live in the Sunny Glen neighborhood. Clearly, this action flies in the face of all those who earned the right to have their voices heard at the ballot box. You know, sadly, to the thirteen hundred and forty-five residents who signed the initiative petition, this has the appearance of the city council catering to the special interests of a law of minority, rather than respecting the clear messages that the residents have provided throughout the process. Yeah, and tonight's like deja vu of ordinance fourteen thirty-one again. It should be noted that with the proposed ordinance fourteen sixty-two, you know, this also will define the use for short-term rentals in our zoning table of permitted uses for the first time, but without the clarity of the appropriate zoning districts. This makes the city's zoning laws unpredictable going forward when a use is sometimes allowed, but not always. This inconsistency is bad for the city's residents and bad for the businesses wanting to invest in our city. The doctrines of fairness are lost as some residents face the likelihood that absentee owner lodging businesses may continue to operate next door to them forever. You know, if they're fortunate enough to still have neighbors, they face the likely possibility that one day they will not. Yeah, and the special interests that have pushed for this ordinance, you know, will be granted an unfair privilege over other investors who may be, you know, who may be denied. As noted, it's not fair to anyone. To add to the confusion of this last-minute ordinance being introduced, this ordinance also mixes short-term rental business regulations with zoning laws. You know, the business regulations can always be easily passed on their own by the city council, you know, as we've seen, as Mike noted with the the two rejections of doing that in the past few weeks, and you could actually do it tonight, too. You could just keep that part of fourteen fifty-five and pass it, but but, you know, the business regulations are, you know, they can always be easy there. But as a result of bundling this, you know, these business regulations together with zoning regulations, you know, and you put it on the same ballot, it's like, you know, as Councilman Robert noted, it's like comparing an apple to a basket of fruit, but the basket of fruit contains a rotten apple. You know, fortunately for us, you know, the voters will still be able to find the rotten apple. The one thing to do would be to vote no on this resolution and allow a simple yes or no vote on the citizens' initiative in the special election. What message do you want to send to your constituents? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess we have Jerry.
There's one word that sort of fits what I just said through. Unbelievable. Including this four to three, over and over block of votes. Simply take Title V out of fourteen sixty-two and spend the time from now to January to figure out what you want to do in Title V after the special election. For fourteen sixty-two vote, okay, I go to the polls to vote. If I like Title V in fourteen sixty-two, I vote yes. But if I don't like Title eighteen in fourteen sixty-two, I vote no. So what do I do? I do, I vote no or yes. I like part of it, but don't like the other part. If you straighten it out in January, thirteen forty-five, may, voters may support you. What they won't do is support fourteen sixty-two that destroys the character of their neighborhoods. I actually took a covenant violation to district court and won. No HOA, but we have covenants. I understand that process in detail. HOA covenants. Will you enforce our HOA covenants? If our approving authority, and I'm part of the approving committee, tells you, shows you that the covenants don't allow short-term rentals, will you enforce that? Or do we have to do that? If we have to do it, and we're against the short-term rental community, that could be a lot more than the thirty-two thousand dollars it costs me to enforce the covenants personally. Here's a joke for you that, that came up tonight, clearly. I hope you get it. Corps of Engineers Building Guide specifications. You have a building problem. Here's what you do. You beat to fit and paint to match. That's what you did tonight with fourteen sixty-two. Tried to beat it to fit and painted to match what you think you might be able to confuse the voters with. We're not gonna get confused. It'll be very simple. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor from Case and Neil to approve ordinance fourteen sixty-two as amended and resolution nine oh eight as amended.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion, or are we ready to?
Anything further, council? Go ahead and call the vote.
Okay, this one, if everyone can vote, we can try and do it electronically. We can see if it works.
No.
I just don't have Councilmember Nikai's vote.
Sorry, I never got it. No.
You, council, this motion has passed four to three with Zulawaga, Nikai, and Connors voting no. Thank you.
Off to item ninety, which is ordinance fourteen fifty-five. That was tabled from July. And Jeff's gonna, sure.
Mayor and council, I alluded to this earlier. This is the ordinance that you laid over back in July. Your choices here are either to lay it over again, if you'd like to revisit it at some point, or to postpone it indefinitely.
Or kill it.
That means kill it.
Which means kill it, yeah.
Council, any questions or comments on that one?
I'll make a motion to postpone it indefinitely.
I'll second.
Suzanne, anyone signed up for this one?
No, ma'am. Okay, this one, we have to do a voice vote on. So the motion is to postpone ordinance fourteen fifty-five indefinitely. Motion was made by Neil, seconded by Case. Case?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Harvey? Labar?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Off to item eight, ordinance number fourteen sixty, and city attorney, present that one as well.
Council, you'll recall this from our last meeting. This is an extension of the moratorium for a few months after the election, so that whatever happens at the election, we have an opportunity to implement the people's direction.
Any questions or comments? Can I get a motion?
I move to approve ordinance fourteen sixty, series twenty twenty-three, the ordinance of the city council of the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, further extending the temporary moratorium on a submission acceptance processing and approval of applications for short-term rental licenses.
I'll second. Frank, you can have Frank second.
Thank you. Council, we're trying to see if we can get it.
Anybody, no one signed up for this?
No one signed up, ma'am. Thank you for reminding on it. Let's see if we can do that electronically.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously.
Ten, new business. We have none. Eleven. Off to, and I have some reports. Okay, Saturday, October seventh, from five PM to seven PM at the Woodland Park Library. Come support the Rampart Library District Foundation with Night at the Library, a roaring twenties theme fundraising event. Tickets are now on sale and will be available at the Woodland Park Library the night of the event. That was the presentation that Jean gave earlier. Monday, October ninth, from five thirty to seven thirty at the Ute Past Cultural Center, the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce will host the Woodland Park RE2 Candidates Forum. This is a free event and an opportunity to hear from candidates who are vying for the Woodland Park RE2 School Board. Friday, October thirteenth to Sunday, the fifteenth, Lightbulb Theater presents For the Record, a murder mystery play showing at the Ute Past Cultural Center at various times. Come and enjoy an evening of drama and mystery, and tickets can be purchased online or at the door. Councilmember Case?
I have nothing, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Neil?
I'm looking up my report. I have one for the DDA.
Sure. Do you want me to come back?
Please.
Okay, Councilmember Zulawaga?
I have nothing to report from Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, but I just want to alert the public that on the ninth, there'll be two forums, public forums for the school boards. So one will be held by the Chamber of Commerce at Ute Past Cultural Center. The second will be held by the school district at Columbine. So there's times, one's at six and one's at five thirty. That, I don't have the exact. That's all.
Okay. Councilmember Connors?
Thank you, mayor. This Saturday at nine o'clock, the VFW is cleaning Highway sixty-seven south of the VFW hall, so if anybody'd like to come by and help out. Also on Saturday, the American Legion will be selling raffle tickets at Tractor Supply all day long. And I do owe you a picture tour of all the cemetery headstone repairs. And I promise you that as soon as somebody comes back from vacation, I will do it. And RIP Dick Buckus. He passed away. That's all I have. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Harvey?
I have no committee reports since I'm not assigned to any committees, but I do ask for an attorney's update on the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the school district.
As you recall, at our last meeting, I reported that I had heard nothing. Shortly after that, that report, I did receive a, I got a response from the attorney for the district, and that that resulted in some back and forth. I was trying to get a response to your question whether the district would be willing to meet in a work session. Ultimately, the answer to that question was yes. But in the course of the back and forth, the district also, their attorney proposed some substantive responses to aspects of the red line that we sent over to them. So what I plan to do is do a memo and send along that correspondence to all of you and ask for new direction. Presently, I'm not authorized to negotiate directly with the district. And one of the things I'll be asking you is if you want me to do that. The, so far, the position the council has been in is that you would like to meet with the school board as a group, elected officials to elected officials.
Jeff, if we, if the, if the school district, and I'm not certain who would represent the school district, if they're amenable to that work session, do we need to further your authority, or can we, can we invite them to a date certain?
Suzanne, this is usually where I work with you, if we're gonna set something up. If you would like to instruct me to reconfirm to the school board that you would indeed like to meet.
If, if you would like to instruct me to reconfirm to the school board that you would indeed like to meet in a work session like this,
Yes.
we'll get busy and, and try and set up a date.
Okay, thank you.
That was the original.
That was the original instruction from this group, but the original instruction was that I try and set up a meeting with them in September. I wrote it about August fourteenth. I didn't hear anything until almost the end of the month. So I want to make sure that's your, still your way.
If we were to have a work session, would we be able to do that in November before or after a council meeting?
Absolutely. The council desires. We will make it happen.
But then the two days that I would propose would be the tenth. Wait a minute. No, the ninth or the twenty, well, ninth or the twenty-third. Those are the.
Those are the Thursdays.
The second or the sixteenth.
Yeah, but the twenty-third's Thanksgiving.
Is second.
Hey, let's have a Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would ask that we propose the ninth. Which would be after the election.
Oh, you mean the school board election?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Eleven, nine?
Yeah, all those people.
The ninth is not a regular Thursday.
Planning Commission has this room that night. Pardon me?
Planning Commission has this room.
Eleven, two. Is that what you meant? Because there's no council meeting on eleven, nine.
Yeah, and then eleven, two, which would be before their election. And that's fine, too.
I'm good, I'm good with either date. Whatever date you pick is good.
Okay. Let's see where we can work out.
Yeah, I was, I was channeling my previous planning commission time. I'm sorry, either the second or the second, sixteen.
When's the election?
Second Tuesday of November. But thank you, Jeff. I'm, I'm pleased that we're making some progress on the IGA, and that is the discussion only.
So is there consensus for a date then, or?
Either one works for me.
Okay. Either one works for me. Okay.
That's all I have. Sorry, Hillary.
That's fine. Councilmember Nakai?
Yeah, I don't have any, any committees that are doing anything either, but I did have. I just wanted to, to have a statement. I have the, for the last eighteen months, listened and heard all sides, the facts, the speculation, the fear mongering, and the emotion. My votes tonight weren't votes of choosing sides, nor were they personal towards any council member or citizen. They were what I have taken from this entire process of listening and hearing from everybody up until and through tonight, and what I believe to be the best for Woodland Park. Thanks.
Okay, we have, well, city attorney, you have a report? Oh, I forgot. I forgot about Rusty, but.
I found it real quick. We did have a downtown development authority meeting on October third at seven thirty right here. Six things were talked about. We did receive a TAVA update. Things are progressing. But the interesting thing that was brought up, and it's, it'll be publicized pretty soon, the TAVA group is working to create a West Fest, and they're targeting July seventh, if I remember correctly, fifth, sixth, and seventh, twenty twenty-four. And what it is, it's bringing in, and they'll have little villages throughout the city. The main event would be on the Woodland Station, but there will be some other villages with different Western themed events. Native American Indian Village, Forty-Niners Day type of village, and he has gotten a list of A-lister musicians behind it. And I'm not gonna talk about who they are right now because they haven't committed. But the one that's pushing it is, if you remember the song Wildfire, the musician that recorded that and went, yes, he is working to get other A-listers to come in to that event. So it's kind of a neat thing. I know it's almost a year out, but I just, it came out in the DDA meeting, and I thought it was a cool idea. We did execute the TIF agreement with AJ's Pizza. That was an ongoing thing. And the DDA is looking at the ability for the DDA to grant net, or to give Netco a grant to give some of the money that the DDA siphons off from the fire district back to them. We've got some rulings from the DDA's attorney. I'm gonna wait until the DDA attorney presents it at the DDA meeting, and then I'll bring back what their, what the mechanism is for the DDA to be able to give the fire department some funds. But it is looking promising. The DDA has made a motion, and it was approved to bring to city council a request that the budget remain the same for twenty twenty-four as it was in twenty twenty-three. We made some internal shifting of some line items to make things work with these legal versus professional services, so we do not need it to request an increase as you're moving forward with the budget planning, you know, remain flat. And then the last thing is, the chairman has been reaching out to the Carter family, trying to engage to get support. There hasn't been a whole lot that has taken place, but the DDA has in fact requested of me to place on a future agenda item, a council initiative to discuss where the cog rail cars would move. I've worked with the city manager, and in two weeks, we will come forward. But we, we have some flyers that I'll share with the council, and then we can pass it around. The location that we've unveiled is that piece of ground between the, the library and the Ute Pass Cultural Center, which is across from where all the historical buildings are and just in front of the stage area. We're recommending the city property be used there, and that location does have power, so the cog car could actually be heated and cooled so that it becomes a year-round event center for birthday parties or just another venue that if there's a big area in there, the, the cog car would be right there. It has a beautiful view of Pike's Peak, and it would be the ability to continue the, to honor Myra Sue Carter. And that concludes my DDA report.
Okay, very good. And now back to city attorney.
All I want to report is that my wife has urged me to start doing lunges to stay in shape, and that would be a big step forward.
City manager. I know we have a tax report you'd like to share with us.
Yes. All right, there we go. There we go. What better way to end the night than with sales tax? All right, so we have the sales tax report for September. August collections reported in September. So year-to-date, so far, we're up four point four percent, which is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars over last year. Month-to-date, we were up three point four percent, which is twenty-four thousand nine fifty-six. And then lodging tax been up and down all year. So year-to-date, we're up five point six percent. And for the month, we were down nine point three percent. And it's the same story. If we look at it, we've been consistently up every month. I will note that September was kind of up a little bit more than all the other months for last year, so I'm interested to see what that is. So I'm not going to change my projection that will end the year up three point five percent. So I think that's still gonna be pretty, pretty consistent with them in the budget, so. And then the lodging tax, it's, it's up one month, it's down the next, it's up, so same story. Any questions? All right. Just a reminder, I will have the budget to you all on October thirteenth, and then we'll have our budget presentation at the next council. All right, thank you.
Very good. Suzanne? Thank you, mayor. So as we know by now, we will have an election on December twelfth. It will have two ballot questions on it. And I wanted to just mention, I heard someone in the audience say that the ordinance does not go on the ballot. So it's just to, it'll just be the two ballot question, the titles that you approved this evening. However, the chamber has graciously offered to help us prepare what the citizens have come to know as a blue book. You get, you have the blue book right now for the upcoming election that's produced by the state. Every year when we have a municipal election, we prepare our own little blue book, and the chamber does it for us. They'll prepare it. They will compile the data, but they will get the data from different people. So they don't come up with what the verbiage is or anything, but it'll be a helpful tool for the citizens. So we'll have, the citizens initiative folks will have their, you know, what their ordinance means. And then whoever else prepares the other side will have what their ordinance means. Both ordinances will be in that publication, so this way the voters can see it along with the questions. And just two dates for you all that, the military ballots, we know, you know them now, we call them Uwakawa. They will be mailed on December twenty-third because they go out before the regular residence ballot. So they'll be mailed, no, October twenty-third, excuse me, October twenty-third. They'll be mailed October twenty-third. They go overseas, and so they have special time, you know, longer than you do to get your ballots. And then remember their ballots, they can, they can come back seven days after the election. And then the regular residential ballots will be mailed the week of November twentieth. So that's just my heads up now for the election. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.